Good morning. Thank you all for being here. It is 9:02 a.m., so we're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. If you all could stand with me for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance as we begin.
Will you please by your heads for the invocation? We always thank you for another day. We thank you for giving us travel and grace to and for our students. We thank you for this college and what it means to this community. We thank you for our staff. We thank you for your many blessings among our staff, our faculty, our employees, and our students. Keep your heads up protection around this college and the business that it serves and the community that it serves throughout this county and other places. God bless our country, our state, and our government. Always blessed to be asking you to say two things in my prayer. And we thank you back.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this morning. There is no one here for the presentation of retirement resolutions, so we will move to announcements, and I'd like to invite up Ms. Teresa McFarland to kick things off this morning.
Good morning. Chair Stone Cypher, Madam President, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and acknowledge a unique partnership we have with our community partner, Vology. Vology established the Vology for Diversity and Technology Scholarship with the foundation in an effort to promote diversity and technology workforce. A total of ten scholarships will be awarded to female or minority students enrolled in one of the six CCIT certificate programs, and 100% of the cost will be paid through the scholarships. We hope more partnerships such as this will emerge with our other community partners. And I'd like for Ms. Julie Clement, CPO of Vology, to say a few words about this program and follow with a photo op with the college president and board chair.
Thank you, Teresa. Vology is a managed services provider based here in Pinellas County, and as a successful company in Pinellas County, our CEO Barry Shovlin very much believes in giving back to the community. We have a number of SPC graduates that are great technology employees of ours, and we wanted to go ahead and set up the scholarship so that we could, you know, help other folks really fulfill their career dreams and endeavors. So, very thrilled to be here and appreciate everything that you guys do for the students in Pinellas and Hillsborough and all around the county. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Good morning, members and board members and Madam President. It's always an honor to do this once a year, and the sort of an extra item I want to mention this year, I don't have Joe Lang with me to do this. Joe is the other member of our, from our college who was always on this board, emeritus. And I think you all know that the Foundation Board Directors has made a contribution in Joe's name for $500 for, towards his scholarship program. Let me just mention a couple of things about this award today. The Florida College System Foundation, this year is going to award over a million dollars in scholarship funds to the 28 colleges. They're all aimed at relieving the nursing shortage and helping students who are the first time in their family to attend. This year, the St. Petersburg Foundation will be receiving in the Nursing and Allied Health Scholarships, $16,933 from Florida Blue. First-generation college scholarships, $32,601 from Helios, $5,481 from Bank of America, for a total of $55,015. And quick history was that the Florida Blue now, whose money is for nursing and allied health scholarships, have been awarding since 2006. They've now awarded 805 students at our college, 22 nursing students, and over $175,000 from Florida Blue.
Fantastic.
I had just got here when that program started and they expanded it to allied health, so it was really, has really been a good success. Helios, you're familiar with, first time in college since 2007. Last year, 514 first-generation students, 16 from this college, and St. Petersburg College has received 284,000 from Helios. And finally, Dream Maker Scholarship Award. This is the Bank of America scholarships for first generation in college. Since 2001, St. Pete has received $54,018 in scholarship funds since its inception. So, on behalf of the Florida College System Board Directors and their fund, I'm pleased to do this again this year.
Thank you.
And can we have a photo op?
Sure. I feel like we need music playing for that awkward silence as we walk back to our seats. Thank you, Dr. Furlong, for all your work with the Florida College System Foundation, and we just want to thank those partners again, Helios, Florida Blue, and Bank of America, for everything they've done and for the help with the students that that gives us and other colleges throughout the state. Thank you again. At this time, if I could, call up Dr. Carver.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Williams. Outside, if you've walked in the south entrance, you see our new donated rescue unit. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to publicly thank the city of Pinellas Park, their city council for their unanimous vote on this, the city manager Doug Lewis, and chief slatter of their fire chief and guy Kieran before that. This is an example of community collaboration, support, and stewardship from our teams. We have almost doubled in size in three years. And also too, we're not only operating in our silo at the Health Education Center, we're at Tarpon Springs, and we're also at the Allstate Center. And so, we're looking forward to the many opportunities that we have to grow our EMS. We have students coming from Polk County to attend our program, so we're really excited about the trajectory. Thanks to Team EMS, under the leadership of Dr. Rich Flora, Glenn Davis, all of our faculty and staff to make this happen. So, again, thank you for the opportunity, and upon conclusion, please feel free to come outside and check out our new rescue unit.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Jamelle Connor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce the new provost of the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus, Dr. Leslie Hafer. Dr. Hafer comes to us from Georgia Military College, where she spent over 16 years as executive director managing all of the campus activities and operations at the Valdosta and Albany campus. Dr. Hafer.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. I'm very excited to be here, and I would just like to thank Dr. Williams and the members of the board for giving me an opportunity to be part of the SPC family. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Welcome. And finally, Dr. Williams.
Yes, so if our new government relations director, Erit, could come on up. As you guys know, Ed Woodruff retired in June, and we started looking for a new replacement quickly, but also, we looked very hard and deep, and we found a jewel right here in our community in Erit Ede. Erit has a lot of experience in his work with several of the local legislators, as well as legislators in Tallahassee. She's been intricately involved in the higher ed appropriations and subcommittee and working with Representative Ahern. She's worked with several of our leaders here in the county and knows a lot of folks in Tallahassee. We're very happy to have her here. She's in the midst of working on a master's degree right now, so she's also in school, has a lot of energy, and has already changed our office in one week. And so, we want to welcome Erit Ede.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for the very warm welcome. I'm actually happy to hear that in only a week I've changed things. But, you know, I've learned a lot here in a week so far, and I've met a lot of wonderful people. SPC's great. I'm so happy to be a part of the team and really look forward to the future here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Sounds like you're going to have a busy schedule for at least the next year. Let us know what we can do to help. We'll move to comments, starting with the board chair. I'm saving most of mine for later in the board meeting. However, I did want to mention, Dr. Williams was asked to speak at a small conference with Sage Publication. I got that name right, correct, Dr. Williams? And for doing that, the college received $20,000 that has gone to the foundation. So, I want to thank Dr. Williams for taking the time to do that and for finding many different creative ways to get revenue into the college here. And with that, I'd like to open up to board members for any comments this morning.
Mr. Chair, earlier in the agenda, we had our presentation of resolutions for retirement, and I just, as the board delegate to the Foundation Board of Directors, wanted to acknowledge Frances New's retirement.
Thank you.
She's been here for many years and is leaving us. Teresa McFarland's done a yeoman's job filling in since the summer. On behalf of the foundation, the college family has been going through a search to hire a new vice president of institutional advancement, and I really think there's some exciting opportunities moving forward with that position and the foundation. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Frances and thank her for all of her work, and thank you, Teresa, as well for filling in, in her absence this past several months, so.
Thank you for that, Ms. Cole. Anything else from the board? We'll move to the president.
All right. We've had a lot happening in the last month since we last met. I know that you receive the weekly information, you know, from Jackie. There's a few things. We hosted Kevin Harrington last week, I believe, and it was a full room, and he did a great, great job speaking. He's coming back in November. May end up being a slight fundraising opportunity for us, so we were glad he's there. Mr. Chair, you talked about food pantries on the campuses. Clearwater Campus opened their food pantry officially yesterday, and we have food pantries now on just about every campus to help serve students, working with RCS. Thank you, Trustee Gibbons, for the introduction to RCS and helping us get food. I've had a chance to speak at a, meet some folks at a women in philanthropy group, and they have, many of them have decided to help us with our food pantries. And so, they're going to be helping us fill those spots to make sure we have what we need. Last week, Pinellas County Schools approved the Collegiate High School in the Tarpon Springs campus, and so, we'll be moving forward there. And in October, Representative Sprouse will be visiting the Tarpon Springs campus to see the space for the Collegiate High School, as well as visit the biomedical engineering technology program. Erit has already set us on a track for several meetings and presentations at the college with our legislative delegates throughout the next two months. I'll be ripping and running. She's already got them on the books. So, that's just a small snapshot. I'll come back later to talk about some of our legislative work and some of the roundtables that we put together at the end.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And I do not have any public comments in front of me, so we will move on to the review and approval of last month's minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to our monthly reports. Ms. Gardner.
Yes, good morning. I do have a short report. Marvin Bright has filed an appeal of the final order of the board that was entered last month with the Second District Court of Appeal. There's no action that the board needs to take at this time. We'll keep you apprised. There's a few steps that has to happen, but basically, we'll be responding with our own brief. So, there's nothing for the board to review at this time, just to know that it's been filed.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
You're welcome.
Ms. Gardner, Mr. Chair, is it, at some point, do we file something with them doing frivolous lawsuits? I mean, if they continue this, I'm not knowing.
That could be a consideration. I can have that discussion with our legal counsel that's assisting with this matter.
Yeah, because, I mean, at this point, we're just continuing to play defense on something that we've kicked around and kicked around and kicked around and kicked around, and he's just going to keep filing and filing and filing. So, at some point, you know, make him do more than one thing, or make his attorneys do more than one thing.
That's correct.
Because this is frivolous from the standpoint that it's been through the DOA, and, I mean, we didn't really even get involved in it, but we're still having to defend this. So, if you could, you know, maybe let the board members know if that's an option.
Okay.
I would, I would ask you really to talk to Ms. Cole. She's a real lawyer in this group. See what our options are. But, I just play lawyer on TV, so.
Good.
But if you could, please let us know our options as a relationship.
I certainly will. I'll keep the board apprised as to their options.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbons. With that, we'll move to strategic focus and planning, and I'd like to invite up Ms. Catherine Kennedy for an update on University Partnership Center.
Good morning, Madam President, Mr. Chair, board members. My name is Catherine Kennedy, and I'm the Associate Vice President of the University Partnership Center. It's my pleasure this morning to be able to tell you a little bit about the center. Back at the turn of the century, a need was identified because Pinellas was the most densely populated county in the state and had little access to postgraduate education. Therefore, this concept of bringing the degree here to St. Petersburg College was formulated. That way, residents who have jobs, own homes, have families, basically cannot move out of the county to further their education, would be able to obtain that education while staying right here in the county. In addition, St. Petersburg College recognized the role that it could play in helping those in our community by partnering with these other institutions for degrees SPC should not or could not offer. However, this also was when St. Petersburg College began the workings to introduce bachelor degrees into their warehouse. This only further cemented the aspect to the partnership, which is to provide an educational ladder for our graduates, either after the associate or the bachelor level. Let's keep them here to further their education, and more than likely, they will then remain here to work. In other words, prevent brain drain. So, yes, we are fostering economic mobility for these students, but we're being a little bit selfish by offering these programs here, because we will also hopefully keep them local to pursue their profession. Our very own President Williams is a prime example of how this works, and it benefits both Pinellas County and St. Petersburg College. In front of you, you have a copy of the Fall University Partnership Center schedule. That augments well the slide before you, because it shows all of the programs with each school that we partner. Now, just because we partner with a particular school does not mean that we offer every program from that school. In general, though, our partners and our programs are diverse. We have both public and private schools with whom we work, as well as in-state and out-of-state institutions. There are both bachelors and graduate degrees that are both face-to-face and online. Obviously, as St. Petersburg College introduced bachelor programs, those with our partners dissolved. Of these programs, there are six professional fields represented: business, education, technology, the general interdisciplinary, and the medical field. What I'd like to highlight, though, is of those 70 partner programs, more than half, 45 of them are a direct educational ladder from a St. Pete College program. Let me give you just one example, St. Petersburg College's Biology Bachelor Degree. This meets the prerequisites for not one, but two of our partner institutions: Berry University's Physician Assistance Program and National University of Health Sciences' Doctor of Chiropractic Degree. Gathering data for the University Partnership Center students is a little tricky, because they are not St. Pete College students. Therefore, we do rely on our partner submissions. The state does have us report annually, and, but they only ask for the face-to-face programs. However, even with this partial data, we are able to say that over 2,000 students have graduated from the Partnership Center since 2011. Not only that, but most people don't realize, by having these partner students and these partner staff come to our campuses, they're exposed to our campuses, to our personnel, to the facilities, in a way that they probably never would have. So, indirectly, we're marketing St. Petersburg College. A lot goes into a successful partnership, but it really boils down to two things: excellent communication and getting out of the way. Let people do what they do. In other words, the UPC and SPC recognize that there is more than enough educational pie to go around. St. Petersburg College knows what it does well, and it recognizes that if there is a need for Tampa Bay residents, it is our job to fulfill that need. So, if SPC should not or cannot offer a degree that's needed, we seek out the best qualified program, and we ask them to bring it here. This is probably a good time for me to explain the difference between the UPC and some of our new alliances like Fuse and Ignite. The similarity is that our students do progress straight from an SPC program into the partnering institutions program. The difference is that the UPC student does not leave Pinellas County. Our partner's commitment to SPC is pretty straightforward, and we do sign a memorandum of understanding with each institution. So, they provide their staff, and like I said earlier, they also provide the data about their programs. This means that their staff takes care of their student from application to graduation. It's the partner institution's application process. It is the partner institution's financial aid requirements. It is their enrollment process. It's their faculty. It's their deadlines. It's our facilities. They will provide an entire degree program, not just a class here and there, and if a partnership does need to dissolve, they will do a teach-out. They are the content authority for their school and for their program, so they give us their definitions, their websites, their summaries to post, and they attend our St. Pete College transfer fairs. Pardon me. They showcase St. Petersburg College on their websites. I mentioned before how important communication is, and they designate a staff member with whom we mainly communicate, and it's that person's job to then disseminate all of the information to their staff and to their students. In addition, there are some synergies that we never expected to see, like the free healthcare that we get at the National University of Health Sciences Clinic in the O&amp;P building at the Health Education Center. All of St. Pete College athletes get free physicals there, and all of St. Pete College employees and students get free healthcare at that clinic. Another example is the University of Florida Dental Clinic. This is used as an intern site for our dental hygiene program, but a lot of times, they end up hiring our dental hygienist graduates as well. And then, there's the sharing of faculty. A lot of St. Pete College faculty do adjunct for our partners and vice versa. A lot of our partner faculty adjunct for St. Pete College. More concretely, though, our partners do provide us with their proof of insurance. They discount tuition, most of them, to our St. Pete College employees and our staff. They pay rent for exclusive use of space, and they even give us percentages if they hold continuing education sessions on our campus. This is to the tune of about $250,000 of rent annually and about $15,000 in continuing ed registration fees annually. Did I press the wrong button? Evidently, I did. I think I'll go, I might have. I just thought it was done.
There it is.
Thank you, sir. That should be easy enough for me to do, right? SPC holds up their end of the bargain as well. When a new program is being researched, if University of South Florida offers it, we go to them first. And if they do not wish to bring it to St. Pete, to one of our campuses, then we do seek the next best qualified program. We don't set up competition. So, we don't compete with ourselves, which means we're not going to start any bachelor partnership, we aren't going to start any partnership programs before the bachelor level. And it also means if we currently have a partnership at a certain degree level, we're not going to find a second one to come in. So, we're about quality, not quantity. In scheduling our partners' classes and meetings, we follow their academic calendar. By providing the University Partnership Center staff and students with an ID, and I believe you have an example with you, we give them access to both our security and our resources. By them having a UPC ID card, the security staff know that they belong here on campus, so they're secure, but then places like our resource centers or our wellness centers know that they also are welcome there. We do market their programs with our printouts, similar to that fall schedule that you have in front of you, but also our website. And probably the most effective way that we market their programs are strategic emails. As I mentioned before, 45 of our partner programs are a direct ladder right after our graduation programs. What we do is we send an email to either recent graduates from us or students that are currently enrolled. We congratulate them on their recent graduation or upcoming graduation and say, "We sure hope you'll think about furthering your education with one of our partner institutions." And we specifically say, "You are about to graduate from the biology program. Did you know you have met all of the prerequisites for?" And talk about Berry and talk about National to them. We recognize the oddity of this center, so we also make sure that we get out and visit our campuses, and we talk to our SPC advisors. We absolutely are putting no more work on them. They have enough to do. We simply want them to know if a student or prospective student approaches them and says, "I'm interested in blank degree." And of course, our advisors know that St. Pete College does not offer that degree, that we ask the advisors to get them to my office and direct them to the UPC website. That way, we can see if the degree that they're interested in is something that we do partner with someone for. I have touched a little bit on how we do form a new partnership, but I want to reiterate that. Basically, it's either an internal or an external constituent that brings a need to light, so internally, us here at St. Pete College. We recognize a need because Dr. Jason Crepp and his team's research shows us what jobs are needed in the county and then what degrees are needed for those jobs. Or, we see that our graduates want to continue their education, and we look to place that degree. And of course, we have our student surveys within the University Partnership Center that shows a desire in the community from prospective students for what they want. If it's external, that's coming from a business here, or it's coming from another partner or a prospective partner institution. A business says to us, "I've got employees, but I need them to have this degree," or "I need them to have this certificate." So, we look to see, should St. Pete College offer that? And if we should, we do. If we shouldn't, we seek out the best qualified partner, looking at USF first. If it is a partner institution, and we've had this a number of times, they come to us and say, "We want to bring our program here." And what they tell us is, they've admitted so many students to their program, and yet those students do not matriculate into their admission class, and what they find out is the students tell them, "I couldn't move to Daytona Beach. I couldn't move to Tallahassee. I couldn't move to Gainesville. I couldn't move to Miami." And they're able to see the zip code of where their applicants are from, and they said, "And there's a high concentration of them right here in Pinellas County, so can we bring the program to your center?" Once this external or internal need is met or is recognized, then we look at a criteria. Again, we do not set up a program that competes. We make sure that there is either true employment opportunity or student desire, and that it does support the continuing education. does support the continuing educational needs and desires of our graduates. Under review right now, we either look at them from St. Pete College's point of view or from a partner one that was identified. We have six institutions that we're currently reviewing with 12 different programs. You can see a representation of our partner logos. If you've been to the Seminole Campus, these logos are up in the lobby. That's our main office there. And at this time, I am happy to entertain any questions and appreciate the time this morning.
Thank you. Who, is it St. Pete College or is it the partnering institution that does most of the advertising and marketing for these programs?
Mostly the home institution, just the way that St. Pete College, that we advertise our own programs. However, they get a lot of bang for their buck with these because we have them all over our campuses.
Sure.
And our website. And as you know, a lot of people use our website and stumble upon our partners.
Mr. Chair. You said we're currently, Ms. Kennedy, great presentation, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
You said we're currently looking at six different partnership programs and 12 different ...
Right. Six different institutions. We see that there could be something that could happen, and within those six institutions, 12 different programs that we're taking a look at right now.
When was the last time we expanded any programs under this, in the UPC? Have we put in any in the last two years, three years?
Yes, sir. Florida International University has opened up some more online programs with us. And actually, one that I don't even have on here is University of Florida. I just got a call from them on Thursday, and they were setting up a meeting because they would like to add some additional online programs as well. So we have to take a look at that.
So the reason I ask that question is, I know that we look at what's not in the region, but do we look at the programs that are hardest to get into in the state so that people from outside of the county that would maybe wanting, for example, and I heard this about two months ago, meteorology, there's only at Florida State, and it's only at Miami, right? But it's so difficult to get into those programs. Why wouldn't we be offering meteorology here? People from other parts of the state may move and actually take the meteorology program here to help with our expansion and growth of the program. Is that, are we looking at those opportunities statewide that there aren't any other programs, and they're very expensive? Are we looking at expanding our programs to fit into that model as well?
That absolutely is a criteria that we take under consideration. It has not been investigated as thoroughly as it could be.
Can I just use meteorology as an example because I know those are only two places? I'm not saying, suggesting that we should be doing meteorology.
No, no. Your point is well taken. But it is something where that institution, a lot of times, will come to us and say, "We have so many people that, you know, we have more than we can handle, so we want to open in your area." But that does not mean that we can't do a better job of approaching them and saying, "We understand you have so many people that don't get in. Let me tell you about our opportunity." So we'll take that advice.
Sure. Okay. Do you know how we stack up as a college comparatively to some of the other Florida colleges in the system, as far as how many partnerships we have with universities?
I am so glad you asked that question. I think one other institution has a partnership center. It's really like a strip mall. We're really an enigma. I remember when I came into this position in 2007, I thought, "Oh, I'm going to have my colleagues with whom I can work, not only within the state but across the nation." I can't find them. Doesn't exist.
One last question, Mr. Chair. Since you asked that question, I'll take it a step further. How do we line up with the emerging industries in Pinellas County in supplying jobs or helping to retool and retrain those folks for the workforce that exists in the county?
To shortly answer that question, St. Pete College does the best job of that, obviously. Our focus and what we are allowed to offer our degrees in are these workforce programs, except for our associate degree that is that natural transfer degree. So a lot of times, our partner institutions and our partner degrees, they're the ones that we don't offer or that we can't offer. So it's more the history degree, the English degree. It's those ones that aren't considered necessarily workforce. So St. Pete College does a great job with that. The Partnership Center, it fills the gap that St. Pete College doesn't fill.
I guess, let me ask it a different way. Do we track the people that get degrees from our Partnership Center and where they go to work? And are they going to work in the county, or are they going to work somewhere else? Because you talked about not having the brain drain and continuing to have those individuals here. Do we know that we are, these programs are providing to our workforce today?
Short answer is no. And the long answer to that is because, again, these are not our St. Pete College students. So they're not, and we can't track them. We can rely on our partner data for that, but we've got three prime examples sitting in this room with Dr. Renard, Dr. Connor, and Dr. Williams. That prevented that, they earned their PhD while keeping their jobs, while maintaining their homes, while staying with their families, and they got that, they furthered their education through the UPC right here.
So, Dr. Williams, so one of the things I would ask is that moving forward, when we do these partnership agreements, that we can get, that is provided in the contract, that we can get that kind of data because we actually need that data to show that we're providing for the workforce in Pinellas County. Nothing, I'm not talking against the UPC, but what I am talking about is, when we provide data to the state, that only helps us, number one. Number two, when we talk about, are we, we continually talk about providing for the workforce in this county. Well, we don't know if we're doing that. We don't know if people are just coming here or leaving. So we need to make sure that we can get that data in our contracts. And moving forward, I would ask that we, that's one of the things that we put in the contracts, that we have follow-up, either that we can follow up or they will follow up, and we can find out where people are working. Have they transitioned to a new job because of their degree? Have they moved up in their current job? Well, that kind of data is important because then we know if we're actually, you know, providing for our workforce in this county. And are we meeting the needs of the emerging industries that we see from WorkNet? What is it called? Career Source or whatever it is? From all those, from all the things that we get? We don't know whether they have accurate data and for what they're going through right now, I don't know if we're getting any good data from them at all. So, I mean, we need to be responsible for making sure. Our stuff should be data-driven, and we don't know that because she's not being provided that information. And so I would say that we need to provide that in our contracts moving forward with other folks. And even when they come up for renewal, ask them that we need that data. We need to be, make sure that we see successful programs. We want to know what the success looks like.
Yeah, I don't want to speak out of term, but I would be surprised if they're not in Pinellas County because that's what attracted them to the UPC because they could not access University of Florida or somewhere out of state. We can certainly put that in the agreement and ask them to do that. For St. Petersburg College, the state has been instrumental in getting us workforce information after our students leave because they don't always stay in county, but the majority of our students stay in county. But we'll definitely, we'll definitely add that. Thank you.
Yes, my point, though, is that we don't know whether they're staying at that particular job.
Right. I'm in agreement.
I also encourage you, I know I've done this, again, selfishly, when I'm out seeing a doctor, a lot of times I see the physician assistant, or my family members do. And I can't help but ask, "Where'd you get your credentials?"
No, you see the doctor.
Pardon me?
You see the doctor, which I'm sure of that.
Oh, well, but sometimes. But the, I always ask the physician assistant where they got their credentials. And nine times out of 10, they've said Barry University. They said, "It's over at St. Pete College." I said, "Oh, I'm well aware." And they're top-notch.
Any other questions from the board?
I do. First of all, thank you so much. I know I had asked this question a few months ago, so I appreciate the presentation. But I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The students apply to the, to the actual university. They're admitted through the university. So these seats, are they in addition to the program seats that are offered on campus, or are they just part of the program that's offered on the home campus, and those students just have the flexibility to take the courses here?
They're part of this section. So we all can relate to this when we do our scheduling. We say we're going to schedule a class at the Seminole Campus in this building. We're going to schedule a class at the Clearwater Campus in this building. So from the partner's perspective, they say, "All right, I'm going to schedule a class at Miami Shores Campus in this building." And then they say, "And I'm going to schedule a class over here." So it's separate, is the short answer to your question.
Okay. So it affords them the opportunity to admit more students to their program?
Exactly.
And I don't, I'm not going to say this, and I'm not advocating for it necessarily. It's more an observation. We work so hard publicizing the Fuse programs and moving our students from the associate's degree to the bachelor's degree, and I feel like this is a huge missed opportunity from an education standpoint of our own students and publicizing locally that these opportunities exist. And I hesitated because I don't want to say I advocate for it because we obviously want our St. Pete College students to be St. Pete College students. But if these are programs, per your presentation, that we would not offer anyway, it is, I would love to see how strategically we can really add the course offerings and the opportunities and, again, with your point, not overburdening our counselors, but even from a marketing standpoint, when we're creating our bachelor's programs, schedules are these, I think of it from an accounting term, you know, below-the-line opportunities. So this is what we're offering here. These are additional opportunities. And I don't know what that looks like or anything, but from a, to Mr. Gibbons' point, from a workforce standpoint in Pinellas, if this is an opportunity to keep these students here and then working here, I'm all for it.
Thank you so much. We are focusing on a different marketing strategy, especially with schedules, programs, and courses that we're offering. We have, we'll be sharing that at the end. We've done a yeoman's job in getting the courses marketed differently than we've done in the past. They're on the front of the website now, and we've increased enrollment, you know, as a result of that. And I think that we could definitely do a different strategy for marketing. But with the UPC, they're an SPC family member, but they're separate from the college. They don't count in our numbers. We don't get state funding because of them. They're really utilizing the space. And we are here, the whole reason it was developed was to serve the county, was to bring better access to higher education and improve job opportunities for our residents. I think what Trustee Gibbons said was, "Find out, is it really helping? You know, is it really making a difference in the community?" And then to market it differently. You don't see St. Pete College and the UPC, you know, highlighted in that, in that way. And I think that's what you're saying. Here are all, here's the access to higher ed through St. Petersburg College. You can come to the college, or you can go to the University Partnership Center. And I think, I think that's what you're trying to say. We need to really amp that up.
Sure. Yes, I mean, obviously, with the Fuse programs, I see on the Facebook stream and everything nonstop about A&amp;M, and those students are not St. Pete College students either once they enter.
They start with us.
They start with us, and they move up. And so in that same spirit, and I know it's a little bit different because some of these students might not ever start with us. They might only, but I would, you know, but if we have that opportunity for our own students to feed them up to higher education, it'd be great, so.
Board member Gibbons may remember, gosh, it was probably around 2008, there were billboards around Pinellas County that did highlight the UPC, but that was in a much more favorable economic situation when we had more money. And so I've got the whole campaign in a can. It was out for a little while, and we had to tuck it away, but when financial resources emerge again, we absolutely can do that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Great presentation, and great reminder of how long Mr. Gibbons has been. I'd like to invite up Ms. Jeanette Hunt next for a budget update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board trustees, Dr. Williams. This morning, I have a brief report of our fiscal year 1819 August budget report. First, looking at our revenue, our student tuition and fees, we budgeted this fiscal year at $61.5 million. At the end of August, we received about $26.7 million. In our state revenue, we've received $9.1 million. And in our other revenues, $493,000. We know with our fund transfers in from our auxiliary, we typically see that transfer in journal entry later in the fiscal year, and then our reserves at the end of the fiscal year, totaling our revenue at $36.3 million. The chart below is our tuition revenue, where we budgeted. The red line is the budget, which is $50.8 million. The blue line is what we project we will receive in actuals this fiscal year. You see here, at the end of August, we set a target for this fiscal year. We came in about a half a percent above that target so far. As of now, we are about 1.2% above that target. Next, looking at our expenditures for our personnel and benefits, we're at $17.6 million. You see here, the percentage is a little bit higher this fiscal year than the prior year, and that's due to in August, we had three out-pay periods versus last fiscal year was in September. Next, our current expense at $4.3 million, our capital at $448,000, giving our total operational expense $22.5 million. If we look at our revenue minus our expenditures at this point, we have a balance of about almost $14 million. Any questions on Ms. Hunt's report? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a action item in front of us for the personnel report from Human Resources.
Mr. Chair, move that we accept the personnel report.
Thank you.
That's bringing in our, on our agenda.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That brings us to our consent agenda this morning, as we typically do. I'd like to take these as one item altogether. If I could have a motion in a second, we'll then open it up to any discussion, and then we'll vote.
So move, Mr. Chair, that we accept the consent agenda, is bringing in our agenda.
Any discussion or questions relating any of these items? Hearing none. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. And that moves us towards the end of our agenda here. It's a short meeting this month. We're making up for how long we went over last month, so I hope you guys are okay with that. President's evaluation is next on the list, and as you all will recall from August meeting, we referenced the Board of Trustees workshop that we held. It was either late July or early August. I can't remember. Part of the conversation at that meeting was to go over a similar but new evaluation process going forward, which will go into effect next year, 2019. And that's going to change some things in just a couple of ways. One is the evaluation form itself. We'll have a few of the line items that have been on there for many years removed, and we'll be adding not many, but a few new line items that are a bit more relevant to where we are today as a college and to things that pertain specifically to Dr. Williams, who is the president of this institution. We're also going to be requiring a bit more in the way of references for the Board of Trustees so that we can dig in a little bit more and do our own research before the evaluation takes place. This will be in the form of having access to a summary of the 360 reviews that take place, right now every two years, correct, Dr. Williams?
Correct.
Perhaps in the future, we'll move that to annually. And in addition, Dr. Williams will be preparing a self-evaluation that includes a summary of things accomplished throughout the fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, as well as some goals, some personal goals, as she sees it moving forward. We'll have access to all of those things before we meet with the president. And this is done, just so you all know, on a one-on-one basis. So this is really a great opportunity for us board members to meet with the president and have an open, transparent discussion. And I'm happy to say that this year, even though we did it a month late, the evaluations are done, and they went very well. Dr. Williams received very high marks from everyone at this table in front of you, and we can only say, at this point, thank you for your leadership and for the work that's been put in this first year and a half, considering all the things that are changing and moving and taking place at each of our campuses and at this college as a whole right now. You jumped in with both feet and have just kept moving, moving us forward. And I think we're all in agreement that we're never going to get there, wherever that is. As soon as we reach one goal, we're going to be reaching for other goals. As soon as we reach one goal, we're going to be reaching for other goals. And we're never going to perfect this thing we call St. Petersburg College. But we're going to try to get pretty darn close. So what I'd like to do is just read a few miscellaneous comments from these reports, so you all have a general understanding of how this works, and how some of the evaluation went. And so it's on the record as it should be. And this will not take long, because I don't want to embarrass Dr. Williams too much.
I'm already embarrassed.
"Dr. Williams has hit the ground running as our new president at St. Petersburg College. She has dedicated much time and effort to communicating our shared vision with both staff, students, and our community. Her focus on working with our transition team to make sure all are heard has been amazing to watch. She has tirelessly worked on meeting with community leaders, partners, and state representatives to ensure SPC is at the forefront of conversation. And all this while managing a limited budget," which was something that came up in everyone's evaluation. We also heard this. "Dr. Williams is a goal-oriented leader who has the uncanny ability to motivate her staff to develop specific strategies and achieve measurable results. I've been most impressed by her ability to identify financial trends, anticipate financial challenges, explain the challenge while suggesting solutions, and helping to resolve the issues. As a trustee, I appreciate her transparent communication, prioritization of issues and resolutions." And then we heard this. "I am proud of the direction the college has headed under your leadership. Your first year has been inspiring. And finally, I'm most proud of her willingness to seek out how faculty and students can both be successful, and how she has handled a massive budget crisis." So we know that Dr. Williams could not do this on her own. She has a great team around her. The faculty, the administrators, the staff here at the college has been integral in making sure that we transition well into new leadership. At this time, before I actually have a motion moving forward, I would just ask if there are any other comments from the board on anything I missed, or have not said correctly? Ms. Cole?
I wanted to reiterate your thanks, not only to Dr. Williams, but to the administration, and the staff, and the faculty. The past year and a half with the transition, coupled with the financial issues and the challenge immediately, could have been received differently. And the college family collectively has really risen to the occasion, so. Thank you all.
With that, in view of Dr. Williams' superior performance, as chairman, I'd like to move that we extend her employment contract an additional year. This one-year extension will be added to the existing three-year contract that was in place. Do I have a motion? Or do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, or conversation? Hearing a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? I would also just like to add, for the record, while there was no salary adjustment recommended this year, Dr. Williams made it very clear to me before our meeting and at our meeting that even if there was, she would not be accepting a salary increase. She never requested a salary increase. And she will not be accepting a salary increase until her team and the college receive salary increases. So, just want to make sure that that is out there. Thank you, Dr. Williams. We appreciate everything.
I'll take her salary increase.
And next year, we will be doing this all over again. And the reviews will typically be during the month of June into July as we go forward, not August, September, as we did this year. So thank you. With that, we will move to the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board, and thank you for entrusting me to do this job. And I want to reiterate what trustee Cole said. None of this, trust me, could be done without you. Not one bit of it. All of the work, all of the challenges, it has not always been peaches and cream. But you stood up, and you made it happen. And I want to thank you for that, because without you, there would be no SPC. So thank you for all that you've done, and to the board. Thank you for your leadership. I don't think we've had one month that there wasn't some sort of turmoil that I had to bring, and you guys, what now? No, but you did not do that. You were very helpful, and you trusted me to do that.
We see that phone, we see that phone number pop up, and, oh, man.
Here we go.
Oh, boy.
Here she is, calling us again. No. But I try to spare you of all the day-to-day stuff, so. It's usually big stuff. So thank you, guys, and my hat goes off to you for the work you've done. Going forward, some things that we've been working on, especially with the University of South Florida, I've been participating as a task force member for the consolidation. And we are getting two new advisor positions paid for by USF that will assist us in expanding information to the community about going to college and accessing SPC and USF. And we're also working on our legislative asks that will include creating an educational ecosystem, and how that will bring more resources to St. Petersburg College for Pinellas County, so that we can do a better job of letting people know what's available, when and where. We can expand our ability to tutor. We can help the faculty with more technology, and get things moving for the college to help students succeed. We've also been working on our business roundtables, going from community to community, to meet with the business partners, to find out what kind of training do they need, and what can St. Petersburg College do to provide that. We started at downtown, and I believe we've already started a couple of programs as a result of that. Last month, we were at Tarpon. We're going to be at Clearwater and Seminole in October. And so we'll have some of our legislative representatives there, and some other folks there to help us shape what kind of courses and programs we need to be offering to support our workforce and business partners, as well as our students. So real, real proud of that work moving forward. And then on October 8th, I share with you that Representative Sprouse will be meeting with us at, at the Tarpon campus. I also want to let you know, on September 28th, we're going to have a top-it-off ceremony for the Joseph H. Lang Student Success Center. That is where Mr. Lang's family and the board will get to sign one of the final beams that will go on the top of the building. And it'll be a keepsake for the family to kind of have a understanding that they had a hand in that, and for the board to be able to participate as well. So we'd love for you guys to be there with us for that. I spoke with Mrs. Lang yesterday. She was getting ready to go on a cruise, but she was excited, and will be ready to rock and roll and participate there. We're moving right along with that building. And so I want to thank you guys again for the work you did to help us get to $3.5 million, to move that forward. And so that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you.
Our next meeting date is October 16th at 9:00 a.m. We'll be back at the EpiCenter. Hope to see you all there. Thank you all for attending, and with that, we will adjourn.